This is the Twilight Center. This is the Harpswell Planning Board. We need to sort out some technical issues first. There we go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wow. I'm impressed.
All right.
I just muted you. That's what happened.
We're working on, um...
Technical difficulties.
Just connecting everybody, so we are going to get going.
I muted that computer because I think it's interfering.
I was already supposed to mute it. The mic was already muted, so that's what gets me.
Hmm.
See down here? The mic? I think it's the TV. But anyways, all right.
All right. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Dan Hoback, who is our Vice Chair.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We do have a quorum. We'll start with just introducing board members, beginning with our newest board member.
Heather Allen.
Dan Hoback.
Amy Heibel.
Lori Rice.
Courtney Snellings.
Christine Donovan Hall.
And Margaret McIntyre, the Town Planner.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have a quorum. We will be voting Dan, myself, Lori, Courtney, and Christine. Christine, are you... Have you been moved up?
Yes.
Perfect.
I am. I was up today.
Excellent. Okay. Good.
Did you sign your sheet?
I did.
All right. We have two items on the agenda today. Because one of the items involves two people's attorneys, or two entities' attorneys, the attorney on the board has suggested that we move item 250802, which is Coastal Main Ventures Flycatcher's 28 Field Road, up to be the first item on the agenda so that we can be courteous of attorney's times and fees. And I'd like to get a feel from the board whether that's something we could do to amend the agenda. Do I need to take a vote on that?
No.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. All right. Everybody's in agreement? All right. So the first item is Coastal Main Ventures. Who is the owner? Flycatcher is the applicant. 28 Field Road, map 63 lot 77. This is a complicated application. Normally, they're fairly routine, but this application is seeking permission to remove a commercial non-conforming pier and construct a new non-conforming pier in its place. The property is in the commercial fishing one zone. There are required setbacks for piers, docks, and wharfs that don't serve as community docks, and that is 25 feet. And the setback can be reduced by the codes officer if they warrant it. In this case, there is no setback at all. And that is just due to the nature of the property. I'm going to ask our Town Planner if she would like to give us just a brief update and also invite the codes officer who is here, hiding. Tim, if he wants to add anything as well. And then we'll hear from the applicant. And the board will discuss this. Then we'll go through possible motions. We'll see what happens with the board's discussion and go on from there. So Margaret, can you give us some background?
I can try. I might miss things. But this property has a history with the codes office. It went to the Board of Appeals, and it ended up being settled with a consent agreement, which is a public document. If anybody needs a copy, I have one to give out. But this is step two of the consent agreement, is coming to the planning board for a jurisdictional review for the tear-down and rebuild of their non-conforming wharf.
Okay. Thank you. Tim, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't think that pretty well sounds like it.
Okay. All right. Would the board like to hear from the applicant, or would the board like to discuss?
Let's hear from the applicant and get it on the record.
Thank you. The applicant's representative?
Will you give Lori a chance to say about the sidewalks, too?
Oh, sorry.
I really want to give her her chance.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I want it to be part of the record.
Darn it. Notes from the July 7th sidewalk. That was Mitchell Field, Leach Field. Town attendees was Margaret, Amy, Dan, Tim, myself, Christine, and Don. Don had mowed the...
I think you're in the wrong.
Yeah.
Sorry?
Wrong day.
Wrong day?
We want the sidewalk, built from the sidewalk for Coastal Main Ventures.
I had it from August, too. I wasn't sure which one. So, sorry about that. 3:00, we met at 28 Field Road. Attending was Tim, Margaret, Amy, Dan, Courtney, and myself. Tim Forrester from Flycatcher was representing the applicant. Also in appearance were many neighbors. Gail Hunter, Dave Gillon, Brian James and Jesse, plus others I did not get their names from. Tim from Flycatcher described the problem, the plans to address the nonconformance. Neighbor Gail mentioned that there was an active litigation on property lines. Another neighbor mentioned the surveyor stake was gone. Some neighbors were quiet, while others were clearly upset on the rebuild of the wharf suggestion. Current wharf was in serious deteriorated state. At 3:45, we then went to 76 Cunnor Rock Road. Attending there was Tim, Amy, Dan, Courtney, and Lori. Tim Forrester from Flycatcher was also representing these applicants. Patrick and Abigail Moran, who are also in attendance. Tim at Flycatcher explained the plan for the new wharf and showed the location. Discussions were held on the construction, how it would proceed, erosion in the area, neighboring wharfs and their uses. No evidence of eel grass on the site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I really appreciate your doing that. I think that's really helpful. And I sort of remember, I asked Margaret, but I didn't get a reply, whether we had talked about doing this before, at some earlier point where you would share your notes from the sidewalk?
I was asked that a few months ago.
Yeah.
Since I'm the treasurer. Secretary. Excuse me. Get that straight.
All right. So when we do that, let's... Before we start with each item, maybe you could start before each item with the sidewalk that pertains to that item.
We can do that.
And we'll... Perfect. Thank you very much. That really helps set the tone.
It's a work in progress.
It's a work in progress. All right. Good. All right. Coastal Main Ventures, Tim, or the applicant, would you like to tell us what you're up to?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm Tim Forrester with Flycatcher, here on behalf of the applicants. This is, as was stated, it's an existing, legally existing, non-conforming dock that they purchased the property and would like to replace. Originally wanted to replace it in kind. They have obtained permits from the DEP and the Army Corps for the replacement of this. However, a portion of the dock crosses over the property line to the abutting property, so there's a, you know, the whole consent agreement and everything else associated with this that I won't bother going into. But at the end of the day, the plan of this project is to make it as more conforming as possible. So by doing that, we're not proposing to rebuild that portion of the dock that crosses over the property line. The applicant had a surveyor. The survey was provided. And our plans show just that portion that will be reconstructed. So the new, the original dock was 12 by 48. And then the new, the new structure is keeping the 12-foot in width, but only 21 feet on one side and 30 on the other. And that brings it out to the property line. Applying a setback in either direction would basically overlap on the entire parcel. So there really are no other means of reducing the nonconformity of the structure within the confines of what previously existed.
Okay. All right. Great.
How's that?
That's great. Thank you very much. Okay. So this item is before us as potentially two actions. One is to see if the board wants to decide that it wants to exercise jurisdiction over this application, or allow the codes officer to, codes office to retain jurisdiction. If the board does decide to retain jurisdiction, then it needs to review the application. So that's pretty much where we are. So would the board like to move on, proceed, or on whether we take jurisdiction or not? What do you think?
And then have, and then have discussion.
And then have discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah. I'd like to move that the planning board not exercise jurisdiction and allow the code enforcement office to retain jurisdiction.
Okay. I will second that motion, and now we will have some discussion. So what we'll do is we'll discuss that motion, then we'll vote on the motion. If we vote no on the motion, then we'll take up another motion to take jurisdiction, and then we'll have further discussion, perhaps. Okay. So let's open this up to discussion.
I have some questions. Is this too loud? I've been accused of not talking into the microphone, but this is kind of freaking me out. But I guess you can hear me. So this is going to be a commercial dock, and I just, I have a few questions. What is going to be done? Is there a plan for the use of this particular commercial dock? I'm asking this because it's interesting to me that there doesn't seem to be a place to park. And I'm wondering if something is going to be brought in on the commercial dock and then brought up to the land. Where's that going to go? And who's going to be able to pick it up? Or unless the owners live very close to the dock, and I'm not sure about that, how will they get to the pier, the dock, in order to go down and use it when the dock is finished? And I couldn't help but be curious about that when we were out there. That's one of my questions.
Kristen Collins. I'm the attorney for the applicant. The applicants do actually own property, a residence at 12 Holbrook. So that's, you know, there's separate use there. They have no other, you know, use they need to make of this property other than using the dock. Applicant's son is a lobsterman, and, you know, that's essentially what they want to use the wharf for. There is room to park right there at the edge of the road, and that's what they've traditionally done when they're driving there.
So Holbrook Road, I don't know Cundy's that well, is close to Field Road?
It is pretty close. I can't give you the...
Next road.
Next road.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
I was just going to ask you not to sit down. Because I do have, I do have a question. Having read the consent agreement to take care of all of the other prior stuff, there was a reference of ongoing litigation concerning the property line between, what is it, 63 and 77?
Yes. There is ongoing litigation regarding that. Essentially, so the portion of the dock that you see that encroaches over that line, the question is, you know, have my clients and their predecessors gotten rights to that encroachment through adverse possession? Because that dock has been there since the 70s, and it has been used. So that's the basis of that lawsuit. Not to mention just trying to resolve what that actual boundary line is, if there's any discrepancy there. So totally unrelated in terms of, you know, the land use ordinance and the shoreline zoning ordinance, which is really more just about what the encroachment is vis-à-vis the setback.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that, that kind of gets to the question that I had, which is, in order to determine whether there is nonconformity or the level of nonconformity, we have to know where the property lines are. And I know that there was a survey done to establish where, you know, where you're planning on cutting off part of the prior dock. My question is, has that issue of where that property line been resolved?
Tim, I think you're more familiar with the survey itself, if you want to speak to that.
So we did hire an independent surveyor, or the applicant hired an independent surveyor. They've produced a plan, and we have worked off of that plan. So any disputes, for me, is really a civil matter. I mean, we have a stamped plan that demonstrates here is where the line is. If someone wants to question that, they're certainly welcome to. But in my opinion, that's what's been provided to the board to review. So that's the information that you have.
Okay. So are you the plaintiffs in this action?
I'm not handling this litigation.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So who is, are you the plaintiffs?
Nor is Tim.
No. We're not. I'm not. I'm only here representing the applicant for the dock.
What I want to know is, in this litigation, some of which concerns possibly adverse possession, and some of which concerns the possible, the property line, if the people, if the petitioner is the one who instituted that lawsuit, and one of the issues in the lawsuit concerns the property line, is that resolved, or is that matter still ongoing?
All I can say is, it's a partner of mine who's handling that case, and I'm not familiar with the posture of it. But the, each party has claims against the other at this point. And each party, you know, has their own claims and their own defenses. But it would only be relevant to what the board is doing, I think, if it was, if there was a chance that it would render, the outcome would render this dock conforming. Because no matter what, we know that it's nonconforming to some degree.
Right.
So then the only question that's in front of the planning board is, how much more conforming can it be made? Which means not bringing it towards the property line, but bringing it in from the property line.
Yeah. I guess, you know, and we're going down, bear with me, I'm going a little bit in the weeds here. But where it is right now, the new plans, would that, depending on the posture of the two parties, is it possible that the property line would encroach over where the new dock is planned to be?
No. I don't think either survey is...
Oh, okay.
Is claiming that.
Okay. That takes care of that question. Thank you.
Any other? I mean, at this point, I know the board is just considering the issue of jurisdiction, but I just wanted to make a plug that if we're going to get into the merits of the case beyond that, we have more to say.
Okay. Very good.
So, any other questions? I've got a question. With regard to Section 10.3.2.2, reconstruction or replacement, more than 50% of value. And this is a section in the ordinance that essentially says that any nonconforming structure that is located less than the required setback from a water body, blah, 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 may be reconstructed as long as a permit is obtained within 18 months of the date of said damage and destruction or removal. My understanding is that this dock has not been actively used as a commercial fishing wharf for at least two decades. And it's not correct? Would you, would you be willing to come up and...
Or I can...
No.
Or somebody, somebody be willing to come up and...
We'll bring the mic over to him, maybe. Long enough cord? Oh, good.
Hello? That wharf was built by Freeland Anderson in the late 1950s, not '70s. So it's been there. And the original deed for that wharf is the primary deed from which all the abutters measure and/or center their deeds. And it has been called into question. And then the extension of property lines out over the water, what do they call that? Reparian rights? That's a recent variation done by the town after the wharf was built and had been in existence for 20 or 30 years. So who has rights? If anybody has rights, in my opinion, being one of the three individual commercial fishing wharf owners, of which this wharf is one, I see this new wharf that we're speaking about as having the original rights. Now you tell, tell these folks that they've got to cut off part of their wharf to match new rules and ordinances? I don't agree with that.
Okay. Thank you. I still have the question, though. Can the applicant show that this wharf has been actively used as a commercial fishing wharf in the last 18 months?
So first, I'd have to push back gently, because I think those are questions for the board if you take jurisdiction, and then you're applying the ordinance because you've taken jurisdiction. But...
All right. We're, we're working on deciding how to vote on that. So these are just background questions for us.
I understand. I see that as sort of a threshold thing, and then we get into the meat of the application. But to, I guess, my thought on your question would be that it's, the ordinance does not deal with use of the structure. So if there were non-use of the structure, the structure doesn't have to go away. The question is whether the structure itself has been removed or replaced within, or at the time the application has been made. So, for instance, if it were a nonconforming use, some use of this wharf that now isn't allowed in the zone, and that use were discontinued for a period of time, then they would lose their nonconforming rights. With structures, it's different. As long as that structure stays in place, it can be used or unused, and the structure retains its nonconforming rights. So I think, although it has been used, the question is really more, is there a structure there? And clearly there is, though it is in disrepair.
Okay. I think the issue is whether or not it can be, whether or not reconstruction can take place. I don't know. I guess I would ask, I guess, there's...
But that, I think that gets, I think that gets a little bit beyond just the jurisdictional question about whether we want to deal with that.
Yeah.
Or whether that's something that we believe codes can handle.
It is, yeah. Because it says, "Any reconstruction or replacement approved by the codes office." So the codes office can certainly deal with this issue.
Yeah.
There's no doubt about that. I did want to bring that to the board's attention, though, just as something to put on the table. Okay. Anybody else?
Let me be clear. I'm here as Matt Gilli, a member of the public, not as Matt Gilli, select board member. So I'm speaking as a member of the public, solely as that. I may have missed this, because I walked in late. I had well issues. I apologize. Have you guys gone over, is the application complete? Because it doesn't seem complete to me, or at least it seems like there's some, some stuff missing. And I, specifically, one of the areas is number six, the type and amount of vegetation that's to be removed to accomplish this. And it says, "No vegetation or tree removal is proposed to be removed." That's probably because they already removed the trees, trees on my family's property. We contacted the town, and Margaret actually told us that those trees would have to be replanted upon them applying for a permit. I don't see anything in this application when they plan on replanting the trees that were caught. And there's documentation from the town and my family as well. Furthermore, if you scroll down to the section of the deed, the deed has been edited. There's a red line crossed out through the deed. So how is that even a valid deed in the application if it's been edited? You know, deeds can't be edited. They have to be taken as they're recorded in the Registry of Deeds. And furthermore, just to speak on the commercial fishing thing, I grew up there. I was born there in 1984, the abutting property. That hasn't been used in over 20 years as a commercial fishing wharf. There's never, in my lifetime, the 40 years I've been alive, been a float or a ramp that has come off of that pier as well. I wasn't sure. I was trying to, it showed in some of the pictures that there was one, and others it didn't. So I'm not sure if that's even taken place. But...
You mean this, pictures by pictures, you mean the site plan?
Yeah.
It's, in the consent agreement, it splits it into two different applications.
Okay. So there's a separate one then for the...
It's the tear-down and rebuild of the nonconforming structure. And then they'll, they have submitted a separate application.
That's why I got confused when I saw it in the site plans. And I retract that previous comment, then. That's, those are basically my only points and questions that I wanted to make clear. There is, this will have effects on navigation, too, but I can speak more on that when the next application comes up. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
So my, what about the tree planting? Is that, is that something that needed to be done before this application came before us? So is the application complete?
It's one of the standards in the wharf section of the ordinance, which is section There's a section on vegetation removal and planting that needs to occur, replanting. So if the planning board were to take jurisdiction, or the code office, whoever ends up with jurisdiction, would discuss the vegetation clearing and the removal and the replanting as part of the review of the application.
Okay. All right.
Let me just respond to Matt. Very good points. One of the things that we start off with, that we're starting off with deciding whether or not we are going to take jurisdiction. If we decide to take jurisdiction, the next item on the agenda is, is the application complete?
I lost that. I forgot the order. You're away. Thanks.
Well, you know, you haven't been on the planning board in such a long time. It's been... Yeah. Okay.
All right. Any further questions at this point? We have before us a motion to remand the application to the codes office. If this motion fails, we will then entertain another motion for the board to take jurisdiction. So those are, again, our two options. So I will call a vote on whether or not the board wants to remand this application to the codes office. All those in favor? All those against? All right. So it's 3-2-2.
Okay.
All right. So I will make a motion that the planning board exercise jurisdiction over the application. But I need a second. Courtney, seconds. Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor? All right. All those against? I know. All right. Okay. So we are going to exercise jurisdiction over this application. We will now proceed with the review.
I would request, if you guys are going to exercise jurisdiction, that you continue it till the next meeting, where I can review the application against the ordinance.
All right. We are going to take jurisdiction?
And I didn't put it on the agenda.
Okay.
There's only the jurisdictional review, not the review of the application.
Okay.
Okay. So the first thing that you will do at the, at the next meeting, then, is to answer all the questions about whether the application is complete. Is that right?
Okay. And also answer the question with regard to 10.3.2.2.
Yes.
And perhaps, since our
Is that the vegetation?
Yes, that, that's a separate issue. That's reconstruction or replacement. And then, perhaps we could find Ms. McIntyre, perhaps we could find legal counsel that could legally represent us?
Yes, absolutely. I was just looking at Give me just a second to look at this.
Okay. So what we'll be looking for is a motion to table, then.
Can you speak into your microphone?
Oh, sorry. Once Margaret is finished with her research.
So I'm just a little confused about the motions. So there was two motions, but they both passed?
The, no, the motion to give jurisdiction to the codes office failed on a, two, in favor and three against.
Oh, three against, okay.
Then we voted to take jurisdiction, and that passed three to two.
Okay.
So now, I believe we need a motion to table this application until the next meeting. So I will move that we table this application until the next time we meet and we have our ducks in a row. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, seconded by Courtney. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, this application has been tabled, and we'll take it up probably at our next meeting.
Lori, did you not vote on that last?
I did.
Oh, I can't see your hands from here.
I'm hiding back here, sorry.
And Heather, you did not vote.
I don't think I'm supposed to vote.
No, not at all.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. You're doing great, Heather.
All right, I see, I see. I forget.
All right, I just want to get my ducks in a row here. The next application, the next item on the agenda is James and Sarah Merriman. It's on the agenda, but I don't believe we have any new information. So I believe we'll be continuing that since the
I got an email from the applicant this afternoon, very timely, asking me to table the application. They are listening to our request for legal opinion and still working on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Hopefully
All right, so the applicant has asked to table?
Hopefully, they'll have something for us soon.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so now we will move on to item twenty-five oh eight oh one, which Tim will continue to speak to us. All right. This is an application, another application for a seasonal dock consisting of a pier, ramp, and float on Cunnarock Road. And Tim Forster will give us the background on that at this point. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Tim Forster with Flycatcher. Here on behalf of the applicant. So this is
Can we have this discussion outside? Okay, thank you. Okay. Got it. Okay, shall we, shall we hold on for a minute?
It goes out towards the front of the building, so it's definitely an easier commute because it's a paved path instead of the rocky path.
Okay. Thank you.
That's fine, but thank you.
No worries. We know who you are.
So this is a proposed permanent pier with a seasonal ramp and float on the property. It's a six-by-twenty-four-foot pier, supported with two, two bents that will be pinned to ledge with a three-by-forty-five-foot ramp and a ten-by-twenty-foot float. The float will not ground out during low tide. And Waddle Marine is the contractor to build and install it. Both the ramp and float will be stored off-site in the off-season. It, that's, that's really the short and sweet of it, right there, so.
May I ask Lori to read your, if you're, it's easy for you to read your notes on the sitewalk?
Yes, I can. Sitewalk was at three forty-five. Attended by Tim, Amy, Dan, Courtney, and myself. Tim Forster from Flycatcher was representing the applicants. Patrick and Abigail Moran, who are also in attendance. Tim at Flycatcher explained the plan for the new wharf, showed the location. Discussions were held on how the construction would proceed, erosion in the area, neighboring wharfs, and their uses. No evidence of eelgrass at the site.
Thank you. All right, thank you. So what we're going to do here is, we're going to look at the findings of fact. I will entertain a motion that the that the board finds that section thirteen point three point one, I mean fifteen point three point one through fifteen point three point eleven point three are met. We will take a, we'll, we'll have some discussion about that and then move on from there on whether to approve or not, so.
So moved.
So moved, all right. That is a move that the planning board finds that the standards in section fifteen point three point one through fifteen point three point eleven point three are met based on the following findings, which are incorporated into the motion by reference. I will second, I'll second Dan's motion. And now entertain any discussion. All right.
Seeing no discussion before we go through these?
Yeah, now is the time to
Now we're going through.
Yeah.
Okay, I was going to ask whether the permits from the DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers had come in. I believe that was something you were, that were pending. Right?
I believe we have received those permits.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other? All right, I'll entertain a vote. All in favor of the motion that the board finds the standards are met? All in favor? Thank you, all right. We found that the standards are met. Now we go to conclusions of law. Dan, would you like to read the conclusions of law?
Sure. I move that the planning board finds that in light of these facts, with consideration given to the supporting documentation and the record, that the planning board reaches the following conclusions. The planning board finds that the applicant, Patrick Moran, has met the standards of the town of Harpswell's Shoreland Zoning Ordinance for the installation of a seasonal dock I thought it said duck, seasonal dock in the Resource Protection District. The planning board approves the application subject to the following conditions of approval. One, the approval is not final until such time as the notice of decision has been signed by the chairman of the planning board, or the chair of the planning board. Two, this approval is based on the application, including the drawings of the proposed dock prepared by Flycatcher LLC and on all submissions and information provided by the applicant at final approval, whether referenced in any findings or conditions of approval. Three, the approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposal and plans contained in the application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. Any variation from the plan, proposals, and supporting documents, except de minimis changes as determined by the town planner that do not affect approval standards, is subject to review and approval by the planning board prior to implementation. Four, the applicant shall comply with all state and federal rules and regulations that apply to the application.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Lori, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, unanimous. Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was a little easier, huh? All right. Other business, consideration of Bennetts from the July sixteenth meeting. I admit that I have not read those.
I have not.
I have not read those. Can we do that? I'm sorry.
They're forty-five pages long. I don't think you
They're forty-five pages long?
Yeah. The minutes from the last meeting is
It's because of all the findings?
It's because of all the findings. They were all complicated things.
Yeah, okay, that's going to
I'll cut you guys a break this time.
Okay. All right.
Can I bring something up that goes back to what we were hearing because of something that was said, and I'm interested as to whether Margaret, the town planner, would like to look into it? I am curious about the riparian rights as to whether those are something new for this particular piece of property. According to the gentleman that spoke, Mr. Saunders, I believe, he said that was something done after the dock was built, and I wonder whether, do we need to know that information if we're taking if we're going to hear this application?
I believe that Mr. Tim is going to answer your question.
I talked to three surveyors.
Okay.
And the reason why I was reluctant on this one, and it kept asking for the cove rule, is because the wharf to the east of it, I'll call, the Bowden one, lasted two years and a number of surveys, and they got very descriptive on how they were to project that line. This deed is different from all the other deeds and said that now, this is according to two other surveyors that I talked to. If it is stated in the deed, it goes in that southerly route at that degree, all the way to low tide. There is no change in the riparian line. I don't care what, or who was first, because I was told by the other surveyors, yes, you go back, and there was other lots that were farther east that were actually first, because you have to take the frontage and the date, and there's a big mathematical thing
Good lord.
to determine that, because there was only one spot that the Bowden ramp and float could go. And that's one of the reasons why it took two years. And that's always been one of my questions, why this one, there's only two other places on the map that, like I told you, that are like that.
I think we have to stop because we're starting to talk about things that are specific to this property.
Right.
I think Courtney's question was
Can I keep it general, then, for surveyors? And it's hard to keep it general and not describe something else, but normally, you go point-to-point and do a ninety.
Okay.
How's that? Okay, that's a normal riparian right.
Okay.
You're just go straight out.
Straight out, ninety degrees.
All right.
Because we've got one coming up that I'm going to disagree with. So that's the norm. When you have a curve, a cove, there's a certain different way you have to do it.
Okay.
But I went ahead and bought the book that the one surveyor told me to buy, and then we found another book, and they all say the same about the line going straight. If it's in the deed, there is no straight to straight in ninety degrees. It goes what it is. And that's one of the reasons why the one surveyor gave me this compass that you can look through. You stand on the pin and go that degrees that you can read through here and determine where it's going. And that's one of the confusing things I have about this one, is that nobody's giving to me, if it's been, if this particular, if a particular wharf has been and has been surveyed, they should be able to give us an if I lay a two-by-four like this, and I say the line goes through, I should be able to tell you how long it is on this side and this side. And on our given map, it says, oh, approximately twenty-one feet. Well, I don't like that. It should say twenty-one foot, six inches. And all I want to do is stand on the pin and have Tony or somebody go down and get an idea so that we can say, yeah, I can believe this one, or I can, or I don't believe this one.
Oh, I think my, my general question
Which I'm going to do at low tide.
Okay.
Because I have to find the far pin, which that surveyor, which I did explain today on the set. The one survey that may be in question may be, you tell me if I can say that or not.
No, you're
Okay.
Yeah, he's going to stop you, Tim.
All right.
All right, but thank you.
I think I can interpret what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.
Which is, there are general rules for how you decide where the property goes to the low water mark. The exception to that is that if there is something in the deed that describes it going a different way.
Right.
And so, so that's why it's sometimes important to find out. And, you know, if you've got general rules going on all over the place, but you run into one piece of property that has it in the deed, it messes everything else up.
Thank you.
Is that
Yeah, we had a long talk.
That can be done for, I mean, if I don't have riparian rights that go down to wherever, I can't then sell my piece of property and say that I have those rights. It sounded like there had been a change in the ordinances somehow.
Maybe what he's referring to is when the king from Massachusetts or whatever, when we were under that rule,
Right.
we all, if you're on the water, owned to the low water mark.
Okay.
The lawyers, as they went on, got lazy and forgot, and kept taking it out of the deed. Now, if you want to put in a wharf, we all know we got to give that deed to the assessor. Do I have the rights? Well, she'll read it and say, no. Well, then, now you got to pay the attorney to go back and bring everything up to speed, and then you can finally get it. And that's what, maybe that's what he's referring to. The town never messes with anybody's deed. I don't
Plus, there wasn't necessarily land use or land use ordinances or setbacks. So in this particular case, was the wharf built before that property was split?
That's what I, that's what I was trying to ascertain, in general.
In general, yeah.
Would something, could something be added that wasn't there before?
Well, but
I mean, because he may be incorrect, but he, there might be some validity there, and I just wanted to know the answer.
Yeah.
So sorry to open the can of worms.
No, it's hard, it's a
It's, it is a can of worms.
I mean, the shoreline zone, I mean, I just look at this, and this is, you know, who knows? But the shoreline zone zoning ordinance was adopted February third in nineteen ninety-four.
Well, that was the second one. It was originally enacted in ninety-eight. It was originally enacted in ninety-eight and then replaced, repealed and replaced.
Okay, so it's been around for
A while.
It's been around for a while. It's almost an antique.
But the wharf was built in the fifties, so who knows how things have changed?
Yeah.
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 Well, thank you.
Okay. All right. So now, we want to look about scheduling a workshop to discuss LD eighteen twenty-nine.
And I may have a, I have a potential solution. Cheryl Golick came last week with Senate President Matty Daughtry, and they met with the select board and some members of the public, including some members of the planning board were there. Cheryl Golick now wants to come back to the town with a member of the Housing Opportunity P, H O P, I don't remember what the P stands for.
Housing Opportunity Commission, something like that?
It's P.
I think it's a P. I think it's HOP, but I can't remember.
But I don't remember what the P stands for.
Okay.
So what is this LD eighteen twenty-nine again? I'm sorry.
It's to do, it's to do with housing primarily, but it has other implications such as it changes certain subdivision review.
Yeah.
So Cheryl Golick, who's our representative, but also is a member of the Housing Committee, she is coming back with the woman, the, because there's two people in that Housing Opportunity Program? Maybe it's program. Remember on those, there's a couple trainings where you could watch, and they're doing the rulemaking process?
Robin Gove and Adrian blah blah.
It would be
On the rulemaking.
Okay, so I'm, I'm
Okay.
Are you
So, so she's going to bring, Cheryl Golick's going to bring Robin from, from the Housing Opportunity Program, and then somebody who does the rulemaking regarding subdivisions. I can't remember all the acronyms right now. She wants to bring them here and have another workshop. Members of the select board and obviously, members of the planning board are encouraged to go also. And that is scheduled tentatively for September fifth at five PM. Let me tell you, that's the right time. September third at five PM.
September third?
Yeah. Yep. And then after, we can totally have another workshop. We could have a workshop before, we can have a workshop after, but there is also that workshop available.
All right, I'm out of town that day.
Is that here?
Mm-hmm. And it will be recorded.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you say five? What time did you say it was?
Five PM.
Five PM.
Free at five.
Okay.
What, five?
Five PM.
Third at five.
It's a Wednesday. Sorry, I said the wrong day at first.
I think it would be good to hear from them again, but how much sense does it make to have the final workshop before they do all the rulemaking? Isn't that something, I mean, I attended the one yesterday as well, which you might want to listen to. There were a lot of good questions. I didn't hear the first one, but I'm getting the
Which was the one yesterday?
It was another. Was another, it was another rulemaking. There were three of them.
Yeah, okay.
And I, I'd missed the first one, but it sounds like we're not going to know the real stuff until they do the rulemaking. I don't understand the rulemaking thing. I think you do. I meant the process. This was all new to me.
Well, I think, I think the rulemaking is going to be largely, it's not really going to be substantive. The rulemaking will be clearing up definitions and some wording, but it's not going to substantively change anything.
Okay. There were a lot of unclear areas that people brought up yesterday, actually. There were some good things that were brought up in that discussion.
I believe it. I believe it.
So, I mean, I think we should...
So my, my question is, is whether, I don't mean to interrupt you.
That's all right. I've said too much.
No, no. When, when you go in your meeting with these representatives and the Select Boards there and the Planning Boards there, it's hard to really, it's much, much more formal, and it's hard to, you know, you're more like they're listening to you, and maybe they agree, and then they say something, and then you say something. I'm, I'm wondering whether the board might want to actually read the, it's not long, and then we could have a workshop here at, you know, 4:00 in the afternoon or whenever we can all get together, and really just go over it amongst ourselves so that when we do meet on the September 3rd, we actually are aware of what each other's questions are, we have some background that we've talked about together, we can bring our own shared experience to the questions, and whether that might be a way to do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're talking about just us without anybody coming in to present? Is that correct?
Right. Just us having a cup of coffee and sitting around reading it and saying, what do you think about that? And what do you think about that? And, you know, do you...
Yeah, because I'm going to miss the September 3rd, so it might be good if we can do it before then, so now then the questions can get vented out.
Is there a time?
That's, that's going to be the question.
That's...
How about next Wednesday at 5:00 p.m.? No, I'm already getting a no.
No.
Works for me. How about any other time that day, or is that just a bad day for you?
Um, yeah, I'm out starting at 9:00 to 11:00 p.m.
Okay.
I guess that's a bad day for you.
That's a bad day.
How about, how about Friday, early afternoon?
This Friday? This Friday, are you speaking?
Friday, I'm sorry, Friday, the 29th, early afternoon?
Like what, how early?
Um, anytime after 1:00.
Works for me.
I could do 3:00.
I would only be available at 3:00 or later, just because I have turnovers that day. I do.
Earlier, so what time?
No, 3:00 or later. Like if it was at 3:00, I could probably be here, but not before that.
Okay. Shall we...
That, that whole week is nasty for me.
Is it nasty for you? Oh, dear. Okay.
But you can...
Okay.
You can revel in my absence.
Well, we're, we're looking at, I mean, that's all we got is next week.
Yeah.
25th, that's all we have. Or we could do, you know, Monday, September 1st.
Holiday.
Labor Day.
Okay.
Labor Day.
No. We could do Tuesday.
Tuesday's fine with me.
The 26th?
Mm-hmm. No, the 2nd.
The 2nd.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in the wrong, in the wrong month.
There's a resiliency meeting at 4:00 p.m.
Okay. Do you want to meet Tuesday at?
There's another, no, the resiliency meeting is the 26th.
Yeah, why is it on the calendar? Don't know.
Get it up.
You want to meet Tuesday at 1:00? Is that possible? Or Tuesday at, does that have to be 3:00 for you also?
No, no, I just, yeah, that, I have an away soccer game that day.
That could be a little tricky.
Bangor.
If you're coaching.
And we leave at 1:15, so, but I, I mean, plan something and...
No, it's...
I'll meet with you before and ask my questions and pass them on.
And you can always bring them to the meeting.
Yeah.
You just don't, I mean, anybody, yeah.
I can come to September 3rd, so that's not, you know, as long as I can make it to one of them, I don't, doesn't, yeah.
So on a second, what time do you need?
All right. So we're looking at Tuesday or Fri, the 29th or the 2nd? And Dan, you can't make the 29th, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're looking at Tuesday, the 2nd. Does, does 1:00 work for people, or...
Fine for me.
I could probably do one hour if I'll just take a late lunch and just be there from 1:00 to 2:00, and then if it goes longer, I'll just have to leave.
Okay.
Right.
So, what time?
I have 1:00, you say?
Okay, does 1:00 work for, for everybody?
That's fine.
9:00.
Yep, on the 2nd.
On Tuesday, the 2nd.
And we'll meet here, correct?
We'll probably meet in the side conference room.
All right, that's fine.
But, so you'll find us.
Yeah. Okay, and that was, I'm sorry, is that, is that at 1:00?
1:00.
1:00. Okay, so read 1829 and, and just come with your questions or your observations and... I'll bring cookies, I think.
Well, my spell check just changed workshop to worship.
Oh, good. Well, you're a good Lutheran, you probably. I don't know if you're Lutheran or not.
No, I'm Protestant. That's close enough.
You're a Midwesterner.
Yeah. Planning Board workaholic, okay.
Okay, workaholic. That's another one. All right.
And we briefly mentioned this at the beginning, but Christine's the new full voting member.
Yes.
Very exciting. We're still looking for a second associate member. And in September, the Planning Board meeting's on the 17th, and site walks are on the 8th.
On the 8th.
I was going to tell you I couldn't count, so I'm leaving for 18th.
What time was it on the 3rd?
17, let's see.
5:00.
Uh, site walks will be...
3:00.
I hear you.
Site walks the 8th.
Site walks on the 8th.
And the other...
Yeah, hop on up.
Is on the 17th.
Coming in, but they'll have to pick them up at the airport.
Okay. Do you know what we have for site walks? You probably don't.
I have no idea.
Okay.
No applications as of now.
When are they due?
Next Wednesday.
Okay. You have someone up there?
Well, we have one, it's the Cluffs, I suppose.
All right. Okay. We ready? Oh.
Hello? Good evening. Mary Ann Nave with the Conservation Commission. I just wanted to tell you this afternoon, we had Gregory Leclerc come down from Maine Beginning with Habitat Program to talk about freshwater wetlands, and to start thinking about how we can acquaint the public with their importance. You know, we have an open space plan that we haven't really did much with in the last few years, but this could be an opportunity in the future as we think about water supply, housing, to make the public aware of the importance of wetlands, how you can work and live with them. And we don't know where this is going, but he was very, very helpful, I think. Tim was there as well, and the new assistant, which I forgot your first name.
Tony.
Tony. It started with a T. Anyhow, I think he is going to be very helpful to our community, basically, as we maybe start thinking through some of these things, how to widen their, widen the general knowledge to our residents, the importance of wetlands. And I think it's a good start to just get people educated. Anyhow, I just thought you might be interested in knowing that that's some stuff we're working on.
Yeah, you know, I'm so glad you came up. We just got an, I just read this in the anchor, we got an $80,000 grant to study...
It's Mary Ann's grant.
To study...
We're studying, oh, the one we just got?
Is that the $80,000 grant?
Yes.
I think so. We're working on another one now, too.
Matt, just can I ask you, who is administering that grant?
Who is administering?
Yeah, who's, who's administering the grant? For the town, you know, like when we got the $90,000 for the comp plan, the town planner administered it, so...
We are contracting at this point, I believe it has been contracted with Stantec. They provided us with the scope of work on how we wanted to address the issue of marrying... We had, we had this, the whole thing on, no, I'm, I'm out of my league here.
Sea level rise and impacts on town roads. We, they mapped, they did engineering plans for five town roads and looked at the impacts. So this will be a study that will look at the impacts of, of the whole town and sea level rise. And part of it is to make private road owners, give them the ability to do the same mapping that the town did for their five most vulnerable roads.
Okay.
So in other words, just as we knew we did not fall under the general, the general things that happened with sea level rise because of our, our inlets in our community, this will allow us to do modeling on taking into considerations all the information that was used on the, the information that was used to go to DEP to get the exemption or however it came through.
FEMA and the Ransom was our consultant, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's all the more accurate scientific modeling that we use to work on our shore, on our floodplain maps.
So currently, when you look at a, you're trying to model for the future, if you're checking for sea level rise, that, what is there now is based on historical knowledge. This will allow you to use more current knowledge that takes into consideration, we might have some areas in town that are going to be less vulnerable.
Yeah.
As well as more vulnerable. So it'll be more accurate to the, to the town in whole as you try to make some considerations for the future.
Wow, that's great. I'm really interested in what that study shows.
I am, too. They're supposed to have it done, I think they said it will take two months, but...
That is?
Yeah.
Hmm.
And I'm, we're looking to, we've already made, we've gone four months into this contract already, and we haven't even started. But the, we're looking to have, you know, some great information, you know, within the next nine months, maybe. Well, yeah, nine months.
Great. That's fantastic. Thank you.
But we're looking at another grant, too, now, too.
Well, 80,000 sounds like a lot, but it's not a lot.
It goes quick.
It goes quick, but the state is offering another GOPIF grant, which we're applying for next week. And that's the one I've been working on, and that's going to be to contract for water, for drinking water, to enlist town members to help us mark their location of their wells.
Great.
And then...
Finally.
As part of that, we are looking to do a climate resilience handbook, so it'll, we've got that started, but we're looking to have that be printed form, including something on the drinking water piece, and have for distribution to, to the townspeople and realtors and so forth.
Perfect. That's wonderful.
All having to do with getting the public and townspeople just more acquainted with some of our issues as the type of community we are.
Well, all of those, both of those studies will be really integral to our work on the Planning Board as we do our reviews. So thank you.
So I thought I'd just let you know.
Thank you.
Just one last thing about the It Begins with Habitat presentation today. Greg Leclerc is a municipal planning biologist, so he specifically really had some great ideas, especially like as far as codes and enforcement and how to talk to people about wetlands, and he's going to be a great resource for us, maybe, you know, updating our shoreline zoning maps or our ordinances, and he kind of looked at it through biology, which we never talk about. We never talk about biology in town. We don't talk about all the, he, you know, we talk about water, and we talk about wetlands, and we don't talk about much else, but he, you know...
That's because we do everything in the United States ordinances.
Yeah. So it was, it was really an interesting discussion.
Yeah, well, biology and environment are synchronistic.
Yeah, and a lot of it is really trying to marry the two. I mean, you've got codes who's working to what is the rules, and then you've got the other piece of it where it's kind of hard, soft science that you're trying to think about, just how it's really affecting everybody, and if you can get a handle on that, and then start slowly integrating it into the ordinances, that's, I think, a good way to go.
That's great. Thank you.
So Mary Ann, I have a question. How are you finding out about these grants? How, do you have somebody that researches and say, hey, there's a grant for this out there, you might want to apply for it, or is the town looking for these grants? How are you finding out about that?
Right now, the Resiliency Committee is really looking for anything that's coming up pretty much from the state level, and we now have a network that we're involved in, and they contact us when any, anything is coming up.
Okay.
Oh, that helps, yeah.
Yeah. We haven't really gone searching, searching in other directions yet.
That's great. So the more you do, the more you accomplish, the more they, the more money you're probably going to get, because you can build on, they want, they want to build on what they've already invested.
We're hoping.
Yeah.
We'll keep our fingers crossed.
But I think that these GOPIF grants are specifically from municipalities, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Municipally from...
You can have partners, but they have to be administered through the municipality.
Right. And also, we are looking, as they come up, you know, we have a lot of private road homeowners who are not covered with any of the issues, other than having to pay for the aftermath. And we are kind of keeping our eye open and working with road associations to acquaint them with what they need to do and know that could be helpful to them along this line. So we try to, we're trying to have a larger input with them, just finding out who they are is really difficult. There is no master list of road associations, believe it or not, there is none.
You know, all of this is also really important for emergency preparedness.
Oh, yeah.
Having this information, because we're gonna, we're gonna get more storms and more need to have people helping each other out, and that's really good. It's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll see. Welcome.
That would be a good goal, to be able to get the road associations known to the town.
Yeah.
That's going to be a challenge, though, to get that information.
Do you think people will want to give it?
No, it's like, I live on a private road. We don't have a road association. We just kind of like, okay, it needs to get filled, you go out and do it, and that's it. So it's nothing formal.
Interesting. Yeah.
It'll only follow houses, so, that's why, that's why it's not very formal.
That's what we do, too. And as long as that works, that's what you want to do, because once you get a road association...
For the larger neighborhoods.
Yeah.
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 Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. That was really a...
It's early.
Well done.